I'm worried about when we come.
Yeah. She's in Texas. She's not for... Sorry, we were talking...
Did you just turn it over to me?
I did.
Thank you.
He dragged that out as long as he could.
Yes.
Okay. I want you to know this isn't the first time in my academic career where I've been talking when I should have been listening. Well, here we are today to talk about, or to have our work session. And the first issue that we're going to talk about today is on reading interventions. Dr. Boyson is going to lead us through that. And I know you all remember, but this is all still a follow-up to the information we received from our statewide report card. And also really is driven through our strategic plan. You'll see some of that information today and some of that information Monday night as well. So with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Boyson.
All right, thanks. Good afternoon. And we put together the reading interventions work session at collaborative effort with curriculum, the whole curriculum services and special education because we all worked together on this reading intervention. And when we looked at it, we really said, we can't talk about the interventions without talking about the curriculum. And so we'll talk through what it looks like pre-K through 12 because that is all the students that we serve within that Sioux Falls school district. So our first lens is really looking at that strategic plan. And again, district priority, area one, student outcomes. That's where our reading interventions and our reading curriculum call, priority statement one. Making sure we have that rigorous, effective, engaging curriculum for all students emphasizing growth in the achievement gap. And priority statement two, students will continue to foster an environment of high expectations combined with interventions to support and meet the learning needs of all students. And then really goes back to that strategic plan on our goal of ensuring all students can read on grade level by third grade. And ties that back into that state report card. So we'll start with a look at that state report card. And when we look at the smarter balance scores, and up here we have third, fourth, and fifth grade smarter balance scores. And really looking at that performance, and this is last year's performance, but recognizing that we have a unique opportunity in Sioux Falls with our English language learners and how that ties into their, the achievement level. And knowing research says it takes five to seven years for those students to gain proficiency. We have our largest group of students starting in kindergarten and working through. So how long does it take Sioux Falls to get that group of students caught up in that language proficiency? How's that play into our smarter balance scores? Recognizing thirteen percent of our population at the elementary are EL learners. And so we separated it out on here, knowing that that's a unique opportunity for us in Sioux Falls. So the first column on each grade level is our district smarter balance scores from last year. And then if you go clear to the right side in that column, that's the state. So the red, the first columns, our district score, the green columns, the state score for smarter balance at that grade level. And then we pulled out our EL population. So on third grade, the first one, the district scored at forty-four percent last year in third grade proficiency. The state scored at fifty point seven. So six points there, not quite six point, or six points difference, six point seven between the district and the state. But our EL population at third grade, we had eighteen point eight percent proficiency with our EL population. So now I pull the EL from that third grade proficiency. And our third grade scores go up to forty-six point seven. And that's that brown column, that third column there. So as you see, as you walk through there, we have, here's our, our third grade scores without the EL population. We have about four points there difference. And then we come over to fourth grade. We're closing the gap when we look at all students at forty-five point six to the state score at forty-nine point seven. And we pull out EL, we've passed the state on our proficiency scores at fourth grade. Yep.
Do we know what percentage statewide are EL learners?
Okay, okay. No, no, I'm, and that's, I do ask questions as you think of them and with all our resources here. Yeah, so Demi's looking right now, so we'll, so good question. So you want to know what the percentage of our EL learners or the percentage of their proficiency?
Yeah, no statewide. So we've got thirteen percent EL in the Sioux Falls school district. And what is the state, two percent or three percent or eight percent?
Might also be nice to know what's the raw number. How many students do we have and how many students are there in the state?
Since we have eighteen percent of them.
We have fifteen hundred at elementary, fifteen seventy-two at elementary. So that's our thirteen percent.
Thanks.
Yep. And then when we look at fifth grade, our proficiency was forty-nine point two for all students. Subtract, subtract out the EL students who are at fifty-two point eight. So again, we've passed the state on our proficiency levels. Not, we recognize the opportunity and the challenge of getting our EL students to proficiency by the time they exit fifth grade.
It would be nice to think that we started with all of these kids in kindergarten, but we didn't. I mean, some of these kids arrive in fifth grade or arrive in fourth grade. And so we haven't had years to work with them like we have had that benefit for some of these younger.
If we knew all of them started with us even at early childhood, then we would have those years with them. But they don't, we take them whenever they arrive. They could arrive in seventh, eighth, ninth, eleventh and get them to that opportu, at that level. So, all right. So then let's look at our proficiency on smarter balance on third through, or third through eighth and eleven. Because this tells the story of how we slowly gain on the state. But then once we get to sixth grade, we don't look back. We pass the state in proficiency. So third grade...
With all students.
With all students, correct. We didn't separate any students out of this. So all students, we have six points difference at third grade, three point difference at fourth grade. Close a gap, we're getting three points different at fifth grade. And then we pass them. At sixth grade here, we've passed the state again, increased that score. And then we tie the state at eleventh grade. And we know the challenge at eleventh grade is students are, are they, we like to believe they're all engaged when they take that test at eleventh grade. But we still are at state average on that proficiency, on that smarter balance. So again, we close a gap knowing we have five to seven years to get those EL students to that proficiency level. So now we'll look at our reading programs and our interventions, starting with pre-K because we know we have our students from early childhood all the way through twelfth grade. And Sioux Falls, thirty-three of our, thirty-three percent of our students attend one of our early childhood programs. So we have about two thousand kindergarten students each year and nine hundred and eighty-seven of those students go through one of our early childhood programs. Early childhood has started top. So that's a nice number when we look at that. Early childhood, the instruction there, we have high scope. And high scope is the curriculum for the early childhood. And it's play-based, child-centered, really looking at engaging activities for those students, purposeful play, developing imagination, that creative play. And getting a little bit deeper into the reading, they have dialogic reading. And dialogic reading is, they take small groups of children, they, you know, half, the other kids are at activities at the table. Now I'm going to bring a small group around, we're going to bring a book out, we're going to look at it, we're just going to talk about the pictures. And they work with that book all week long. So it could be, many of you might know like Brown Bear, Brown Bear. But a book like that where it's predictable, they can see the patterning, they can look at that and they can build on that information throughout the week. And then they'll have baskets of books around, so really immersing the students in reading with that dialogic reading. And then they have literacy home visits where the teachers pick a couple of families that they really want to work on that literacy and building that literacy engagement with them. And on Fridays, they go out and do home visits with them. And they're working with those families, talking to them about how you read books with kids, bringing books into their households so that way they have that opportunity for literacy and really working to engage the families with that. And each building has two, at least two literacy engagement events during the year with the early childhood families. And they bring them in, and again, the teachers create activities, they model lessons for the families so that way they know how best to read books with kids. And try and get books, if they get corporate sponsors, get books into the hands of those families too. So that's our early childhood program. And again, we have about two thousand students that start kindergarten, but nine hundred and eighty-seven of them last year started that had had experience in our programs. That doesn't count for private preschools, but just our programs. Then we move into the elementary. In the elementary, we looked at our tier one, tier two, tier three, tier four instructions. So on the base, that is our tier one instruction, that's collaborative classroom. And collaborative classroom is also known as collaborative literacy, really working on building foundational skills for those, for all students in readings, speaking and listening. And the arrow off to the side is who delivers that instruction? That instruction is delivered by the classroom teacher. And we put literacy grant in there because we had a literacy grant for four years. And this is our fourth year. And through the state of South Dakota, and that literacy grant, the first three years focused on K through three teachers. And really working on those foundational skills and helping in those five areas of reading develop their capacity in reading. This last year, they extended it again for one more year. I looked at Deb because Deb's the keeper of the grant. But they extended it for the fourth year and we could provide training for fourth and fifth grade teachers. So this year, Jennifer Salmons has been going out into all buildings, providing training for fourth and fifth grade teachers on literacy skills. And the word analysis is one form that they use, but it really breaks it down by skill. So teachers can, okay, you're struggling in this area, now this helps me identify how I can help support you. So that was, that's been a great opportunity through the state and then that ends now this year. So then the tier two support would be the, right now we have tier two support in four buildings. And that's the SIPs program. We have that at Terry Redland and Hawthorne where they have a SIPs teacher. And that teacher is really work, is working with first grade. And that's where we identified, we wanted them to work, they're targeting all first graders. The four buildings, we have four buildings with SIPs, but two have a teacher and two do not. So Cleveland and Garfield do not have a teacher. But they were identified because they had seventy-five percent of their students below grade level in first grade. So looking at how that's all coming together, we had our first set of math data after, or right before Christmas, they took the math assessment, looking at that, the teachers, the two buildings with the teacher, their students are performing just below our all district number. So they've taken those first graders and they've raised the bar and they're catch, they're almost to the level of our other buildings. The two buildings that don't have the teacher are not doing as well. So, and it's because they can provide that intense intervention at a specific time where I don't have to work with the other twenty kids in my classroom at that time. So, so it's a, so at first blush, we're getting the results we wanted at that. The next level of intervention is leveled literacy or LLI. And that is delivered by our, our special education team. So our special education teachers and our CEIS teachers. And the CEIS is provided through the special ed department. And that's our coordinated early intervention services. We have that in ten elementaries, so it's five point five teachers split between ten elementaries. And they're, they were identified because of the over, Deb, you can say it.
The disproportionality of identification.
Right, for special ed. And then our top tier is our reach program and that's for our RISE students and able to help them and support there. So that's elementary. Questions on any of elementary?
So I know the results are early, but just given that, are we looking at ways of changing that model then going forward with perhaps the budget process, asking for additional SIPs teachers then so we can get kind of those same results on a larger scale or?
We are looking at that and, and really looking at how we can help support those. Todd said we have all the money in the world.
Oh, Todd.
What a guy. So as we move into middle school, we don't have a specific reading course in middle school, but reading's embedded into all the content areas. And so really working with instructional coaches and on those teams on how to, how do I do critical reading within those content areas in social studies, science, math, and to help support all areas. And then we move into the interventions. And our first level of intervention is called Lit Zone. And Lit Zone is delivered by a classroom teacher and it's fifty minutes. And they really work with those students in there to help develop skills through novels. And so they're working with novels and working with high interest for those students. That's a fifty minute. And the, all of these interventions in middle school, so Lit Zone, Read One Eighty, System Forty-Four are built into their schedule. So it's a dedicated time in their schedule where they go to that intervention. Read One Eighty is, it's two periods, so I put a hundred minutes there, but it's two periods of time. So their periods are forty, so not quite a hundred minutes, but it requires two periods of their day for that intervention. And it's broken out where they have time to work on the computer on some interventions and then they work on small group with a teacher instruction that way. And really to help support their skills in comprehension, vocabulary and some writing. And then System Forty-Four is that next level. So that would be your tier four instruction, System Forty-Four. And that's less time, that's a one, so fifty minutes. So that's one session out of their day. But again, online instruction and instruction with a classroom teacher. Again, built into their schedule. And that's delivered by EL teachers because we do have some English language learners in there and help support that. And then special education. And Read One Eighty is our CEIS provided by special education teachers. And then the top one, Imagine Learning for our EL and inside curriculum. And that's for our highest level, our RISE students there. And we move on to high school. And that looks completely, completely different because that's divided out on what they register for. I mean, there's interventions built in if you're an English language learner. We have our English language development courses. We have Reading One and Two or ILEC which is delivered by SED department and CEIS. We have resource reading, again, if I'm a student on an IEP, that's the courses that I'm registered for. And basic reading and then edge for our RISE students. So again, depending on what students register for, looking at our new graduation requirements and then how we can help guide them into the courses that best meet their needs. Yes?
I'd be curious, you know, I'm just more familiar with Lincoln obviously, but it used to be required during their admin to read. And they've gotten rid of that and they've actually eliminated some of the admins. If we can look at scores on the eleventh grade testing to see the difference, if that's made a difference by removing that reading requirement.
And that's by building because it, right, right. So you want to look at eleventh grade scores, reading?
Yep.
At Lincoln specifically?
Because Lincoln only has two days of admin, right?
And you're not required to read either. It used to be you couldn't even do homework, you had to read a book and, and your choice.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. We will look at that and I'll get back to you on that, okay? And then in, just in summary, you know, we recognize our opportunities and our challenges at all levels and the challenges that our students bring to us when they join us. Again, we have two thousand kindergarten, kindergartners joining us each fall, coming from all levels. We'd like to believe that they're all engaged and ready to learn. Some are reluctant, you know, it could be their first time away from home. And then, so how do we help build their excitement for learning? You know, by having engaging teachers and getting them in there and being able to focus on each one of their needs. And through our professional development that we have here in the Sioux Falls district, we have mentoring, we have our instructional coaches to help support that. We do the professional development with the reading instruction, just trying to help build their capacity. But then another tool when we look at data mining is the NWA, the map assessment. And really being able to use that tool at K through eight to dive deep into those bright spots of what we see that is working across the district and really look at that. And how can we help replicate that across and provide opportunities for students? And one more thing that we, we have met with principal groups for many years as a curriculum services department. This year, we're asking the principals to bring their data and talk to us about what's going on in their buildings and share. And that has been a good opportunity for the teams to collaborate because it's a smaller team of admin that bring their data, well, and they learn from each other what is working. They share their data. And then it gives us opportunities to know how we can help support them professionally, with professional development, but also with the data mining too. So when we look at all those interventions, those opportunities, we look at it as great to help our students learn. I mean, that's what we're about. How can we help all students learn in Sioux Falls school district? Stand by for any questions?
Questions for Dr. Boyson?
I'm curious, I know other districts that are much smaller do like a kindergarten screening. And I, and I get arguments kind of both ways. Like there are people who, right or wrong, they're going to bring their kid to kindergarten whether they're ready or not. And that's fine for some people, it's a financial decision more than an educational decision. But I think that there's also a group of people who would appreciate that information and may make a decision differently if they knew that their child wasn't maybe as ready as they could be or should be for kindergarten. And so I've always wondered why we don't have some sort of screening process. If nothing more to just say to your, the parent, here's where they are pre-kindergarten. And then you take that information and when you make classes, you make sure that there's some leveling out and there's not one teacher who has a lot of students who maybe aren't as prepared for kindergarten. And then you have another teacher who has more of a well-prepared class, just by no fault of anybody's, but just the mix of students. And so I know there's fees to do that, have to do with that, you have to pay staff to. So I'm just curious, have we done that in the past? Does anybody know and is there a reason why we don't?
I can speak to a few. I can't say that we do it consistently across the district in every single building. But there are a large majority of buildings that do do a type of, we don't call it screening, but it's, I get to know you.
Okay.
And so they come in, but it's after they're already identified on a class list. So that way, come on in.
So they're actual classroom teacher?
They're classroom teachers. So then I get to know you and parents can fill out some information, but I can get to know you and kind of get an overview of, do, you know, can you write your name? Do you know a few colors? Do you know a few numbers? Not, not that we can't teach you all of that, but it gives me a baseline of, or if you're just frustrated when I ask you that question, how you're going to respond to some of that academic demands when you're in my classroom. So some buildings do do that type of screening. We have, we provided a survey to parents during kindergarten registration just to try and gather some of that information. Have you had preschool? And just that type, because that helped me to make my class lists in that way too. So, so some buildings do look at that a little bit differently and strategically better.
And, and we have that, we have that available, don't we, year round?
Yeah, we have year round out at Central Services where parents can get their child screened at no cost. And appointments are scheduled all day.
Sure, so just call out there.
And once a month, we'll do them in the evenings if, if that would help a family.
Sure.
So that's available all year round.
And then is that information just given to the parent or is it given to the school that they will be enrolling in or where does that go?
It's given to the parent.
Okay.
If there are any areas that are concerning, then we might provide other opportunities for that student. We might evaluate them.
Sure.
We may give them other preschool things to look at.
Okay. Do you have any idea how many people take advantage of that?
Oh, we screen over a thousand kids a year.
Oh, good.
From out there. It's a hot and busy place.
They do everything because I have a son who's deaf in one year and they do OTPT screening for the five. It's really comprehensive.
We have a nurse that does hearing and vision screen so that if there are challenges that are suspected, we can thoroughly look at that and refer them on if that's what's needed.
Sure. So is that information that either is or could be shared at like each elementary school's open house?
It is.
Is it already?
It is.
Good.
We have flyers and brochures at all doctor's clinics, at the Department of Social Services, at the WIC office. We have them all over town. We have a lot of physicians coming to refer children to us automatically when they get to surgery.
Good. I'm glad to hear, I'm not a kindergartner anymore, so I'm glad to hear that we have all those resources in place already. Thank you.
Thanks, Deb.
Absolutely.
The information on the SIPs is just, it's good to, you know, because obviously I was one of the, I know people are concerned when we got rid of LIA, what was going to happen with those schools especially and what was going to happen. So it's awesome to hear the two that have the teacher are, we're allowed to, are needing more of them wanting to go. I, I think we all as board members really would look to see if we can find funding to.
We have to.
Yeah, the other two schools.
Remember, remember with LIA, it wasn't a, it wasn't a budget cut. It was a...
Is it worth it?
Yes, and do, how do we, how do we appropriately allocate the funds we have to get the results that we want? And so we try, we try all these things. And the difficult part for us is to let go of things that aren't getting us where we need to be. But now that we have something that is getting us to where we want to be, we've got to figure out how we generalize that. That's, we have to do that.
And really what we see, we, I mean, with the, all the SIPs buildings once a month, just to say, okay, how's it going? What are you seeing, what are you hearing? And right now, preliminary, it looks like all first graders at Terry Redland are on grade level. I know if they hold, I know, is that, and Ryan's like, this never happened. And, but Sue, can you speak just a little bit to what, another piece about, about Abby? So Abby is the person who is the coach of this. And she's coaching the, the teachers, but she's, the teacher at those two buildings, but she's coaching the coaches in those buildings and she's coaching the classroom teachers. So just a little bit about, that's the piece. When we talked to those principals and those coaches and those teachers in the building, they said, that's the piece that's making it effective because we have somebody that's the next one. But I'll let you speak to that.
Abby had, she was the lead of our literacy in action program. And I think even she would say, if she were sitting, I know she would say that her, her understanding of how kids really learn to read, particularly those kids who struggle in those first years, is, is different than what we had initially thought and the practices that we were using with LIA. And so she can really work with foundational skills. She knows them inside out. She is a tireless worker. She seems to be able to be ten places at once. She goes in and does a lot of modeling with teachers. She identifies things, just simple little things, just like a basketball coach would do. Hey, when you did this, I don't play basketball, you need to move something different. And so she can do that with reading instruction. And it's, it's just so pinpoint and, and just laser focused on what teachers need to do. And she has changed the instruction in those buildings and... And she has changed the instruction in those buildings and made a world of difference. And then she supports our coaches in the same way. So even, even in the buildings that aren't using SIPs, she's able to help the coaches, help the teachers to use those foundational skills in the being a reader portion of collaborative classroom, which is also foundational skills, just not as in depth.
And it, and we really believe the partnership between collaborative classroom and SIPs, because SIPs is a portion, is a product of collaborative classroom. That's what makes the enlightenment so nice for those students is, oh, I'm hearing it here, but then I go back to my, with my classroom teacher and in my lesson with being a reader, I'm hearing it here. And we even had one of the teachers say, and I'm not going to remember Julie, when she said, at our last meeting, she said, what two vowels or what? She was trying to blend something and she's like, we're not doing it right. They call it collaborative classroom. They helped them out with it. And we would think that we would know that as teachers, but it's such a craft, um, learning to read with these struggling readers, that there's things that we didn't know that we're learning through this process. So that's the professional development that goes with it. It is huge. It's exciting. I mean, when you sit with them, you're just, to hear the progress that these kids are making, it just, it warms your heart, so.
Sue, did you, did she just win an award?
Thank.
I didn't see that there's.
Yes, yes, yes. So she was our curriculum leader of the year last year. So, and she was out up here last week on that cold, cold day.
Cold, cold day.
Uh huh, so, yes. Good. Demi, did you find any numbers for us?
Well, it's really odd, and I'm going to show this to Doug in just a minute, but I, I'm on the South Dakota Stars and I've had Sue look at it twenty times too. Third grade, there were ten thousand five hundred and seventy-four students that took the assessment in ELA. But the ELO subgroup is completely missing from the SD Stars. All the other subgroups are here, but the ELO one is not.
We're, we're over forty percent of the states.
That, yeah, that part I was just trying to.
It gives you an idea.
Yeah. It's roughly, we have that year, so this year's current fourth graders, we have.
So if you could pull that down out of.
Or two hundred and eighty-eight.
Ours and the States.
There's about six hundredish in the, in the States.
Yeah, thank you. All right.
Good, thank you.
Thanks.
This is a public meeting, so I need to open up for public input on green intervention. We have a lot of the public here, but I see no one wanting to address us, so we will move on. And Mr. Veek?
Thank you. I'm going to just get us up to date on positions you haven't seen since our last meeting. So if you go to page eleven, is where they start, you have the red there on the school logos like I did the other night. Stop me if you have questions. Twelve twenty is just another placeholder, so no position on that. Twelve twenty-five is a, the exact replica of SB forty-nine, which is an act to establish a determinant in identifying students' sexual identity for the purpose of participation in high school athletics. We oppose the Senate bill, so we are also opposing the House. House Bill twelve twenty-seven is a key bill. It, uh, it provides privates, it allows private schools to receive a prorated share of taxes collected from rural electric companies. We're recommending opposition. Tax dollars should not be distributed to private schools. Public schools are already underfunded without diverting those tax dollars to the private. I'm saying if the state can afford to fund private school students, it should amend the Constitution to make it legal, then set rules for privates to follow that put them on even plowing field with public schools. For example, they should not be able to pick and choose which students they accept, things like that. And then maybe go down there, but they, they're underfunding the public school students, so they're not even anywhere near being able to fund the ten thousand or so kids that go to private school. House Bill twelve thirty-two is another key bill. It would lower the compulsory age for attendance from eighteen to sixteen. We recommend opposing the bill. Sioux Falls School District and all other school districts are held accountable by the state. And the Every School Succeeds Act for the graduation of all students, this bill would not allow them to drop out at sixteen. Seems to go against those two, those indicators. House Bill twelve thirty-four requires that two hundred thousand dollars of the contractor's excess tax on realty improvement contracts for concentrated animal feeding operations be deposited into the local school district's general fund. Any amount over two hundred thousand would be deposited into a fund for special ed extraordinary costs. We recommend opposing the bill. The state should not be creating more sources of unequalized revenue outside the formula. That substantially favors certain districts, and I imagine people who wrote this bill know who those districts are. I don't. Regarding the extraordinary cost fund, there's, there is other proposed legislation to adequately fund that, that fund. And that's where it should come from. It shouldn't come from a random source where we have leftover money, so we'll put it in there. So we recommend opposing that bill. House Bill twelve thirty-five would, is an act to establish requirements regarding parental consent for the collection of certain information by schools. The, this is an update to thirteen three fifty-one-two, which is state law in administering surveys in schools. The state law requires a school to obtain parent-written consent prior to administering any survey that includes information about sensitive subjects, including political affiliations, drug use, gun ownership, and several others. The bill would amend this state law by specifically stating each school district must establish a policy explaining the parent consent required for surveys. This bill also removes a current provision which conditions that the state law is not intended to supersede or modify FERPA, or the federal PPRA, which also governs the administration of student surveys. We recommend no position on this bill, but we have quite a lot of information. No, no position, but there's quite a bit of info there. Twelve forty-four would provide for the disclosure of certain documents and records of public officials. Currently, there are public records exemptions for personal correspondence, memoranda notes, et cetera. This bill states that exemptions will no longer apply to officials and employees of state agencies. The bill also eliminates a second exemption from public records in, which are internal records or information provided when records are not required to be filed and do not constitute final tabulations, instructions, policy, or determination. We recommend opposing the bill. State employee personal records, particularly when opinions, policies, recommendations, et cetera, that are in draft or unfinished format, such records should not be public. Making such records public would hinder sound decision and policymaking. Unfinalized records and information, removing this exemption also inhibits sound decision and policymaking by government entities. Of course, final tabulations and determinations should be public records. However, releasing unfinalized information may lead to public confusion. Entities should be able to analyze information received and properly analyze the information before releasing it to the public. So we recommend opposing on that. House Bill twelve forty-seven would reinstate the old high school graduation requirements for all students. And if after two years a student is failing or at the twenty-fifth percentile of their cohort group, the student can be placed on the basic diploma path under the new graduation requirements. We recommend opposition. The bill removes the responsibility of the Board of Education standards to establish graduation requirements. There's been several, I've kind of done things like that and opposed those. House Bill twelve seventy is designed to protect the teaching of scientific information. We take no position on the bill. It references thirteen three thirty-eight, standards revision cycle content standards.
I think that we should oppose that one like we have in the past because it actually allows us to, allows teachers to step outside of the standards and criticize. And our negotiating, when this came up in the past, we in fact changed our negotiated agreement to say that teachers in the Sioux Falls School District will uphold the South Dakota standards in science. It's just kind of a tricky way to allow for non-scientific concepts to be taught in schools.
I think you're right, Kate. And I know it had to take some courage for you to say that in this setting, but I'm, I'm embarrassed to get to this point without me seeing that.
Just wanted to add before the fourth.
Yeah, I would, I would say we would offer that as a, we would, we would oppose. We would oppose that. You'll see that reflected as a change.
Okay. Um, on the Senate bills, uh, actually, there is a one we should look at. Page fifteen, Senate Bill three was a key bill that we now support, has amended. And you can see the language we had in there. We overstruck because it was. And then if you jump to page twenty-one, uh, the bill, it's Senate Bill one forty-one, require public schools to assess students in grades three to eight and in grade eleven. New content is that any assessment required may be administered in either paper or electronic format. We support that concept. Senate Bill one forty-six would allow homeschool students the opportunity to earn a fine arts credit through extracurricular activities and then qualify for the opportunity scholarship. No position in that bill?
One forty-six.
Uh, one fifty-one, sorry. I looked at the one that was in the black, that we've already known. One fifty-one, my. Senate Bill one fifty-two, it's a placeholder. It's just, the title is an act to improve civics education in South Dakota public schools. We are suggesting to oppose additional civics ed requirements. We've had several bills on that. You know, this bill is our most specific.
Can we go back to one fifty-one for just a second? Is everybody okay with, with that bill allowing homeschool students to qualify for an opportunity scholarship? And earn that credit through extracurricular activities? Are we all okay with that as board members?
Yeah.
Okay.
I am.
Okay, good. Just wanted to take a temperature.
Senate Bill one sixty-two requires local government bond elections that are held in even numbered years to be combined with either the general or primary election. We recommend opposing locally elected officials. No better the needs of their residents than a one-size-fits-all approach from here. What if for any one of a myriad of reasons, the election cannot be held in June, but needs to be held before the end of September to set the bond levy? And that's just one example, and we kind of had that here in Sioux Falls, so we recommend opposing that. Senate Bill one eighty-two would revise the special education property tax levy and revise the state aid to special education formula. It's, it's essentially just increases the sped state allocations by two and a half percent instead of in law, I mean, it, inflation is two point three. And then the sped qualifying levy would go up three point six percent under the cut, the special ed version of the Culler Gabriel Amendment. So the state maintains its share, apparently in local needs going up greater than valuation, so they need to increase it. I haven't seen the numbers on that, but that's what they're doing there. Senate Bill one eighty-eight allows for state designated tests. Oh, we support that bill. At the high school, so Senate Bill one eighty-eight allows for state designated tests at high school level to be, to be end of course exams in the areas of algebra one, biology, and English three. We support the bill. End of course exams would allow districts the opportunity to utilize the test data to better drive their instructional practices to support students.
So would those replace smarter balance or would they be added?
Teresa's.
Yes.
We think they would replace.
As we know, it's, this will be the last year for smarter balance. They have a part, you know, where they're reviewing those right now.
Uh, there's one more bill. We hadn't had it written up yet, and it's eleven seventy-two, and I'll throw that over to Kate.
Yeah, House Bill eleven seventy-two, Kate will kind of explain that, then I'll talk about potential position.
So this, um, this would be a state law that would prohibit a government unit, which we are a government unit, from enacting any policy or procedure that would prohibit, limit, or discourage a law enforcement officer from communicating or cooperating with a federal agency or official in the enforcement of immigration laws, including making inquiries about the immigration status of a person who's lawfully detained or under arrest.
So where, where we are, here's a, here's a position that we would put in front of you. That, that we think, first of all, we're, we're wondering about the position that will put the SROs in that work in our buildings. And we want to make sure that whatever we do, we're in congruence with our SROs and with the city. We, we think we've navigated that communication to the point where we can say that we think this bill would potentially place school districts in a difficult place in trying to follow state and federal law. I'm going to read what our position would be. The state law would prohibit a government unit from enacting any policy or procedure that prohibits, limits, or discourages a law enforcement officer from communicating or cooperating, cooperating with any federal agency or official in the enforcement of immigration laws, including making inquiries about the immigration status of a person lawfully detained or under arrest. The Family Education Rights and Privacy Act, FERPA, is a federal law that protects the privacy of student education records. School district must have policies and notices on how student information will be protected following the federal law. If a law enforcement officer was working to cooperate with a federal immigration officer and in that cooperation contacted a school district, under FERPA, the district would need to provide notice to parents about the request for information. This could potentially be considered under the proposed bill as limiting the cooperation between the federal and local officer. So what, our, our position would be, would be to oppose House Bill eleven seventy-two. And our primary purpose to, in, in the opposition is that we think it puts the SROs in a poor position to work with our students. Any cleaning up of that, Kate, that you would do? Clear?
So we'll, we don't usually take motions, but we started doing this because this stuff is pretty timely, obviously. The session doesn't go on very long and we only meet twice a, the Monday night meetings are only twice a month. So can, if we get an action to approve?
Let's first ask for public input on the legislative update. There is none, so I'm going to get a motion to approve the positions changed and new, particularly going forward, so if we can get a motion.
So, second?
Okay, discussion. Just, this may be just anecdotal information, but I had a conversation this morning with a former legislator. And the placeholder bills that Todd mentions typically in a session for the entire session, there are somewhere between four, six, maybe eight placeholder bills that are, that are put out both combined between Senate and House. This year, there are forty placeholder bills that are just sitting out there waiting for meat to be put on bones. And I think that, well, I think that that allows legislators not to do their job and put these placeholder bills out there. I also learned from this legislator that you can, you can introduce a bill after the deadline, which was, we could go Friday or whenever that was. Takes two-thirds vote of both the Senate and the House to be able to do that. But this is a, this is a quick end run around that rule. So anyway, that's just information that I found more than just a little interesting. So anyway, that's just information that I found more than just a little interesting. So got a motion, a second? Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Post same sign. That motion carries. And we're on to board committee reports. Todd, you want to start us off?
PTA, before you start, everybody can see this, but Board Member Parker is out of state on business, so she is not able to join us today. Go ahead.
Okay. PTA hasn't met, sports authority, we're getting ready for the Summit League and doing some different NCAA bids. Budget we covered since our last meeting. I did just come back from the Associate School Board's Advocacy Conference. Just went over funding IDEA, getting an accurate 2020 census, higher ed to improve the FAFSA app, improve school safety, and to look at the more hurdles, trying to figure out a way to get over mental health hurdles and insurance. All was going great?
It's all going great. We had our meeting January seventeenth. Everything looks to be on course. Grand rounds is being used by members. Let's see, nineteen percent have completed all their health questionnaires. Forty-three percent are on the program, sixty percent have started that. We haven't heard any feedback really on the change in the new insurance policies for the additional policies individuals. And our next meeting is February twenty-first. Education Foundation, we've set the date for November seventh. Will be their signature event. It's going to be downtown at Raven, has donated their building, from six to nine. Students from CTE will be providing food. And we're going to have students perform and do different things throughout. So we have, save that date, November seventh. We have a date coming up at the Barrel House, April twenty-ninth, all day, eleven to close. Ten percent of proceeds will go to the Sioux Falls Education Foundation. April twenty-ninth. And they also had a pizza rib event on Super Bowl. That didn't have very much on that one, but anyway. And that's about it for that one. And let's see, calendar, we had a meeting and another meeting coming up, February twenty-fifth, our next meeting. Hopefully, we'll have the 2021 calendar figured out. And hopefully, there'll be no more snow or cool days coming up, so.
We had lively discussion.
Very lively.
So it's going well. Path was canceled, last meeting, so we didn't have that. We talked a little about calendar committee and then policy, we met yesterday. And there's, I think, four or five very minor revisions that'll all be, be revised in the meeting. So nothing, literally, I think it was changes to references for the laws and things like that. So it wasn't anything content wise that we changed, so that is all we have.
Southeast Tech, we're going to, of course, have our meeting here in a bit. Things are certainly chugging along out there. Should be getting a report on some new programs that they are proposing to to get started. And good stuff going on out there. Budget, we went over. Chamber Board, interesting, as I was looking at the report, listening on reading interventions, we referenced two, two points from our strategic plan in there and how that strategic plan really drives everything that happens in our district. The Chamber Board is going through a strategic planning process, I think maybe for the first time that they've had a formal process that they're, that they're beginning. And it's, I've seen here and other organizations that have been involved in how important that strategic planning can be to the success moving forward with an organization. So that's a big piece of what the Chamber is, Chamber Board is working on right now. So that is all of the reports. Anything else to come for the board? Then we will adjourn until we start the STI meeting. We're adjourned.